Six thirty, a call to meet to order. First order of business is public comment. If anybody has any public comment, they can come to the podium, state their name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes and address your comments to the board. Anybody interested? Item number three, Scott Conklin, Forest Line. Kevin, you want to add?
Good evening. So, back in January, there was a fire at Forest Land Campground, as you probably all remember. And I should have, at that point, told Mr. Conklin that he needed site plan review, and I did not, because I didn't think he needed it at the time. So, he was issuing a building permit on March fourth to reconstruct the burnt building, which was burnt in its entirety. And the permit was basically, old building picture like an L. The new building squares that off. He was issued a permit, paid the permit fees, had everything engineered like he was supposed to do. And then last week, we received a letter from one of the butters, challenging the issued building permit. And because of that challenge, I issued a cease and desist order for the construction of the building. So, Mr. Conklin has requested, he's here to, through you guys, to override the cease and desist order to allow him to continue the construction of the building at his own financial risk as it goes through the planning board process. He's on the planning board docket for Thursday, May ninth. He's applied for site plan approval for the new building, so he's amending a previous site plan approval. And that's over here. This is Mr. Conklin.
Do you have anything to talk to us?
Just, we have business open in a few weeks. May third, I put it off, it's been made third, because of the, it's kind of took a lot of the business from the command and recall. This season was, I don't look at their webpage, but they made a pretty, I believe, a little bit more to it. A lot of memories were lost. And if we must get at this point, footprints, we actually have this pretty much, there's no locks, and there's no cellars in this building, that old recall had a cellar to it. This one they're gone.
Excuse me, what's that? It's the recall office apartment convenience door. So, it's all in one, it's not just a recall?
Yeah, a call to a recall, but yeah, it's a multi-use building. And it looks like they have it up, and down, for the start of the season. It's my first year running the business, and I would like this really to be, if we can make a little change, as soon as possible. We'll get to meet it once. You know, and I don't want to disrupt, coming in. I didn't really drop, you know, a few people, you have to see them come back, there's people who've been coming in for 35 years. That's their camp up on the lake, that's their getaway, they get out of drugs, and I don't want to disrupt that. So, that's where I'm at with that. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Mr. Brown, anything?
I'm okay.
Don't be a part of it. I don't have any questions either. Any comments from anybody? Nope. I move to a no cease and desist order issued by the planning and zoning administrator, Aaron Rossi, and to allow construction of the replacement of the burnt building to continue at owner's financial risk while it goes through the site review process with the planning board. Do I have a second?
Start second.
You two take it on second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
You're all set?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three. Item number three, select board organization. Do we have updated forms that we can maybe, sorry, last time, Denise showed us the ones with the tweaks in them.
I just have the corrections, I mean, I wasn't here when you first discussed it, so I didn't know whether the board had just kicked the can down the road to this meeting, or whether you truly had no problems with any of the changes.
Well, we were going to take this time to see if there's anything they wanted to tweak. I look, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Just to update the dates and the names and...
We'll just stay on the same committees that we run, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, in terms of the two documents that you have, in terms of how things operate.
How you operate.
Okay, I will bring the final to the board next week, or two weeks. Well, it could be next week.
Could be next week.
Okay.
So, those two would be great. Anything else on number four?
Nope.
Number five, Steve Bullock, highway supervisor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so, I got a few things, so, I got paving up first, because that's what I'm looking at. So, I just wanted to let you guys know what my plan was for paving this year. I got about nineteen thousand left from last year's budget in paving, so I contacted the company, the one that did last year. They're going to come down. I'm going to try to pave Lovelane, and that was supposed to be on this year's list, but I moved it to now, because I want to pave that little section of road up by where the Christmas tree is, and like where the town sign is. I call it Mastway, it really doesn't have a name. That is a town road, and then, so paving that in Lovelane would give me one mobilization fee instead of two, because they can pave it in one move. And then we'll do Clement Way, which has been on the list since before I started. And then, we'll go back to the list, and we'll do Sackett, Joe Ford Snell, Angel Road, Randall Road, High Road, and Recycling Center Road. And that should leave me about eighteen thousand. And we're going to shim Snell Road. So, that should leave me on another eighteen thousand after that, to carry over in case we have patches that need to get done on other roads, pipes that need pavement. And, you know, stuff like, maybe a small shop, Harton Lotte, if that ends up working out right, well, and stuff like that. And then, another thing on the list was the tennis court. Over into Mastway Fields is in really, really bad shape. There's pieces of cross fencing missing, some of it isn't attached, and it's just kind of flopping, and with kids playing Little League and stuff, it probably shouldn't stay So, I'm asking here permission, if we could take it, take the fence part down, for safety reasons.
And what's the price?
I'm sorry. Taking the fence down is just going to...
Oh, just taking the fence down, that's all?
Yeah, it's got, I think it's got to, I think it's a safety issue, we'll continue it standing.
Have you spoken to the rec commission?
No, I haven't.
Gary?
As you may recall, we've brought the tennis court issue up in the past, and we've been putting money into the trust fund to redo that court, it is undersized, it's not regulation size. I was over there looking at it, and there is a tree root that's lifting the pavement, which is quite dangerous, and I would like to close that court this year until we rebuild it. Two reasons, that's one reason. But the other reason is to, I found last summer, that the court became extremely slippery with, when it got damp. It was almost like walking on ice. So, until we get a plan to repair that or rebuild it, I would like to close that. If Steve wants to take that fence down to keep people from getting hurt on it, you know, rec commission doesn't have any issue with that.
Question though, I thought we had a little bit of discussion. Was there any other thoughts about just not using that court and building one down a Little River Park?
Well, we haven't gone that far with that discussion, at all. I know we've got space down there to do it, but we have to have, you know, we have to plan that out to decide what we're going to do with that extra space, how we want to use it.
Well, that's, I mean, really, that's exactly what I think would be the best solution to. We've been wrestling with this tennis court for really quite some time now, as to what to do with it. And I'll be honest, I've never seen anybody even hit a ball on it yet. At one time, I guess, we used to put an ice rink on top of it or something, is that right?
Uh, no, we're outside of it. I don't think I ever put an ice rink on it.
I mean, I think if we're going to invest in a tennis court, we ought, we can put it a Little River Park, that's where we ought to put it. It's what it's for.
I guess where I'm going with this thing, why you play around with it, just, if it's that slippery, you know, take it over. And then force the issue to plan to build a new one, a Little River Park.
Well, we have the, we have the black cup already over there, it just has to be laid out. I'm sure it's plenty large enough to make a regulation-sized tennis court there.
So, I guess, not speaking for the board for myself though, if you need to bring this back to the recreation committee, and say the board is considering, or strongly considering, just abandoning that site, so the, it can be taken out, it'll be totally gone, it's disgrashed, and putting our full weight against looking at the profitability of putting a tennis court down a Little River Park.
We're going to need it for the Easter egg hunt anyway, a year or two.
Well, I'm not quite sure what's going to happen with that, because we were down looking at the logistics of holding it there, because we don't have the back of the school anymore, as we had in the past. So, we're not quite sure if we're going to hold it there, down a Little River Park. We should be making a decision shortly. But with regard to the tennis court, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, and we'll come back to you with it.
As far as I'm concerned, you can take down the netting and everything else at this point.
I don't think the net is any...
The nets are down, it's just the fence that's up.
They take the fence down, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, but if the recreation committee decides that it's, like I mentioned, it's up, they go along with this, I guess we should just say, the highway people take it apart and dismantle it. Then we'll have no accidents of slipping.
Steve, can your people take that down? There's also some electrics there, too.
Yeah, that's another issue. I went over there to look, inspect everything, once the wind went away. And there's a GFCI on the pole over there, and someone had smashed off the cover that protects it, and the power was on, so I went to go put a new cover on, and the whole entire electrical box shattered, because it'd been sitting there for so long. So, there is an electrician trying to fix the power box.
What does it power?
There's a light.
Excuse me, for the tennis court?
It's not facing the tennis court. I think it used to power a light, or powers a light that I think went toward the ice skating There's regular outlets, and then there's a big outlet that I think was used for the fair at one point, that's sitting there.
Did they, I'm sorry, did they use that for Memorial Day?
Yes, they do.
Power for the amplifier, the microphone.
Yeah.
So...
That'll remain.
Well, if you're going to remove the tennis court, then it's going to be right in the middle of like the field, we'll like move it.
We'd have to move it, yeah.
So, can we ask the highway person, the supervisor, to find out how much it would be to move it over closer to the monument?
Yeah, and recommend a place for it to be.
Yeah, I can do that.
That would be the right place.
Yeah, yeah. And assume your people could take down the fence, take down the surface of the tennis court, and just remove everything, and like receive it?
No, I'd have to put one on it, and receive it, but yeah, we can do that.
But yeah, whatever. So, maybe you can work with the rec people to find out, one, if they're in favor of it, but also let us know how much that costs.
Yeah, and we'll hold a resource, or, we'll do an electro-electric co-op, I don't know which one that poll is, I can see if we'll move it.
Okay. Because it would be nice to have all of our recreation facilities in one area. And just leave that as a baseball, a small baseball field, and for other activities.
You're saying, in terms of paving, recycling, you're just doing the road right now, the transfer station parking lot, right?
If we have extra left over, because that, so last year's bid was sixty-five dollars and fifty cents a ton, that, those numbers were seventy, so I went higher, because the second highest bid last year was sixty-nine and change. And I know that the liquid asphalt this year is about three dollars higher than it was last year, so my guess is they're not going to be sixty-five, fifty like they were last year. All right, and then the other thing I was on the agenda for was with Jim. His contractor went down, looked at the site, and because of an underground cable wire going through the middle of where he wants to put his catch basin, it needed to be moved a little bit. And it requires a removal of two trees. The same day that he informed me of that, I got ahold of Bill, and we went down and looked at it, and he told me that he was okay with the two trees they were taking. I don't have an issue with it, so...
Two pines?
Yeah, it's two pine trees. Probably, there's a couple little, what I think, scrub brush trees, saplings, that are probably going to be removed.
And can I ask, in terms of the easement, I assume our legal people, and they're okay with it? Any questions?
No.
No questions.
All set. Anything else?
No.
Jim? Anything you want to talk?
Anything you want to say.
Thank you, sorry to waste your time. That's good. Thank you. Okay. I move to approve the presented drainage easement plan, to allow the Mastway School to install and maintain a catch basin, including tree cutting, on town's new property located on the southeast side of the Mastway School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Already done.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You two are getting like...
I check coordinated.
Yeah, we are, we're getting bad.
Item number six, Amy Schmidt, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
I do, do you have a computer that's up with a board?
Yeah, we do know.
It's fixed? I brought a drive too, either way. You prefer me to give you a drive? Okay.
Might be.
There's always a power.
How are you doing?
It's fine. Just pull it apart. Yeah, this is what we, no signal, that's what we...
Oh, no, it's fixed, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Give it a minute. Awesome.
Kill the lights?
Throw one light, kill half the light. And... Okay, so I can, it's the mouse that's going to be interesting for me to use, okay, so...
Where is it?
I got it.
She's doing it the other way. She's going to the app, then she'll be...
Okay, gosh, it's hard for me to see. It's in here. Is it E?
It was in the list there, Amy, right? It was about the fifth one down? If you go back, can you go back?
If I go back?
Yeah.
To...
If you go back to the previous screen, I thought it was the fifth one, BOS presentation, top left?
Top left, little arrow way up. Thank you. I don't think so.
BOS, S, it's like the fifth one, BOS, presentation, SWC?
I don't think that's it. That's what we did in October.
Oh, sorry.
So, hang on a second. Which is this, what drive am I looking for here, for the computer? Sorry about that. Here, this is the memory stick, right? Yeah, I think this will be easier if I just... USB memory.
Yeah.
Course materials, no. It should just be a...
Click on the USB memory, it'll open it?
It's a good thought. There it is. Thank you. Last time I committed here, for support. Okay, so, at our last meeting, we voted to, actually, two meetings ago, voted to suggest to the select board a compost pilot program. And we are interested in engaging interest and obtaining experience in municipal composting in Lee, this would be at the transfer station. We would be advertising for up to 200 people, to 200 families, to do this program. And I always feel when I'm doing a PowerPoint presentation, you can read this for yourself, but... We would provide the bags, I have a cost, the cost is at the end, but it is about eight cents a bag. Participants would have to bring their food waste, that would include meat and dairy, to the transfer station, and there would be totes there, and those totes would be picked up every week by, the name of the company is Mr. Fox, and they charge fourteen dollars per tote that they pick up. We would anticipate having one or two totes. We suggest at most six months of this trial program, at most 200 residents, and it would cost at most eight hundred dollars to the town. So, these are the questions that we would like to have answered. I mean, we really have no data on this, and we are curious about what level of interest there is among Lee residents for composting at the transfer station, how much tonnage will be diverted from municipal solid waste, how much and what labor would be required to implement composting at the transfer station, are there other issues that we might, that might come up? And the biodegradable bags are to prevent, well, supposedly, we won't have to clean out those totes, people will have clothes bags that they'll be putting in the totes, it'll be cleaner for them, it'll be cleaner for the dump. What will be the financial impact going forward? So, there is Randy and Carrie, and I'm not sure if Toby was on that trip or not, yep, to Elliott, where they are using Mr. Fox, and you can see an example of a tote here, and the three-gallon bag that someone is joyfully putting into the tote, but you can't see the joy on their face in this picture. So, why Mr. Fox? Well, so far, New Hampshire does not allow municipal composting of meat and dairy, food waste, and Randy has been in touch with the DES, and it appears that we could do non-dairy and meat food waste, but mixed in with leaves, but it sounds like quite a hassle, it can't be more than 20% food waste, it's, this is definitely the easy, the path of these resistance here, and to be able to get all the information that we feel we need to make this a decision going forward. Mr. Fox is really the game, the only game in town, he already picks up to a number of towns around here, New Market just signed on, and he's servicing all of the schools in the school district. I should say day, I mean, there isn't a Mr. Fox anymore. There was originally a Mr. Fox, but the company was self-bought by somebody else, not any Mr. Fox. And so, Mr. Fox Company has agreed to let us run a pilot program, which means that we will not have any contract, and he's happy to let us do that for up to six months. So, how much would this cost? Well, the amount of the cost really depends on how much weight we end up putting into each tote. So, it's fourteen dollars for each tote that gets emptied every week. So, if we can really fill those totes up, we're diverting obviously more from the MSW, which costs us eighty dollars a ton, so anything that we're diverting there offsets the cost of composting. So, this is, here, we have the 200 pounds, that's the minimum that we're starting at, weight per week, and you can see that the cost per ton would be a hundred and forty dollars. So, the cost over MSW would be three hundred and twelve dollars. As we, as we put more weight into each tote, the price falls. So, if we could get up to 350 pounds per tote, and we don't have to do two, we could just do one, then our cost goes to zero, because the price per ton to have the waste transferred, to have the compost waste transferred, would be eighty dollars a ton, and eighty dollars a ton is what it would, is what we're saving to have it not be hauled to the landfill. So, the net cost, aside from bags, and the cost of the tote itself, would be zero. Are there any questions about that? If we could get 400 pounds of compost in a tote, we actually save money over the course of a year. So, these are yearly figures here. So, we get down to seventy dollars as a cost, but we're saving eighty dollars, so we end up making money. So, we don't know, we don't know how much weight is going to be in each tote, and that's part of the reason for the pilot. As far as the costs are concerned, eighty dollars is what we anticipate for each tote, and the bags, we would anticipate buying 5,000 bags, that would be enough for 200 households, one bag a week for 25 weeks, that would cost 415 dollars. And then the pickup would be 50, two totes per week for 25 weeks, at 700 dollars, and the total is 1275. But then you would need to subtract out the weight that's being diverted from the municipal solid waste, so the cost would be at most eight hundred dollars.
Doesn't Mr. Fox also charge something for the weight?
No.
Really?
He charges per pickup.
What if you don't fill two totes?
He would only pick up one tote.
Or is he charged for the weight?
So, if we only have, I am correct, right?
That's what he told us.
Okay.
Fourteen dollars flat rate for one of those totes?
Well, is that different than what he used to do? Because there used to be a tonnage charge.
We don't know.
He does different for residential pickup.
Yeah.
Yeah, for residents, when he comes over and picks up, it's, it charges, it's a different rate.
And would it be similar things, as what New Market was just recently advertising? Because it's not just food. So, in other words, you can put pizza boxes in, and cupcake liners, and paper plates, and paper towels, and there was a whole list of things.
Yeah, any, any sort of paper that's soiled can...
Yeah, whatever he's doing for New Market, it's going, it's going to the same place.
In there.
So, he, yeah, he makes his, you know, he makes his money by then selling the compost. And so, whatever he is accepting at New Market, he would accept for us as well.
So, the people that participate in this, when you recruit them, they get a list of what is compostable and not compostable?
Yes. And they get a bag, right, and they, and people can provide their own bags as well. I, we have, you know, looked at Amazon, the bags are more expensive, though, this seems like the best price for bags, so we can find the important things for that.
Can I say that the real hope is that NHDES actually issues the regulations they've been working on for the last four years, since the law passed in 2015, and then we could avoid Mr. Fox entirely, and just throw everything in a pile on the compost, in the transfer station?
It's a little more complicated than that.
Well, I mean, this is the idea, and save that, and save this fourteen dollars... Well, I mean, this is the idea, and save that, and save this $14 cost, and then it would all be savings out of the waste, or most, most would be savings out of the.
Substructural question, so more for Toby, I guess, at this point, is where are you going to put these totes?
We're still working on this right now, but we have a couple of places we're looking at at this point to put these totes, to make it easier for the residents when they have to load their trash and so forth. Then we got a couple areas right outside the door when they drive out, there's an exit door there, we're trying to block it off if we could, maybe do something there, right outside that gate when they drive out, and then plus an area where we could actually, down by another container, where we have access, we get water too, because it's part of our regulations that I, working with DES too at the same time, I've been, because I have the, the information from them, what we need to do in order to keep this stuff contained as a transfer station. Transfer stations are different regulations than pickup, so we have to maintain as our permit to stuff, and one of them is, as long as we have water access to keep the facility clean. So we're trying to get things closer, there's a couple areas we're looking at at this point right now. Winter time, I can't tell which winter time, but I have been working on, also too, when I do this, I have to implement this into our operation procedures due to the closing procedures too. So we're still doing it right now, but we could still, we could get this ball rolling, but I don't have to, at this point, have a lot of that in place till, till we're done with the pilot program, long as we have concrete numbers in what we're going to do, if we're going to further this, it's going to be better for us. The way it sounds like to me, it's going to be, it's moving forward, it could move forward.
The totes themselves, I assume every now and then a bag breaks open, or something happens inside there, and then you have issues with maggots or whatever, how do you, are you responsible to wash out the totes?
That's our responsibility, we have to maintain those things are clean, so that's part of a add-on, what we have to do.
So you need a place to back water to go though, don't you?
Right, exactly. So we don't want it to accumulate in the area where the resident's going to be at, we want to make sure it's going into an area that's, you know, reasonable. That's a part of the question that actually, that's part of, I'm planning out now, the last resort, when we have to do this clean stuff. Obvious, there might be residents coming in with maybe five gallons of buckets of this stuff, we don't know, they might, they might purchase bags, but again, they might not, so we have to look at both.
It might be interesting to see how Elliot handles their sanitation relative to.
Absolutely, we got a lot of the information from them, and that's, well, I'm kind of steering that direction. Also getting their DESs employed too, and what I need to do is make sure this is going to apply for town of Lee as a transfer station facility, so.
What's the liability in town if there's something that goes into these bags that's not supposed to be in those bags?
Well, that's the point, that's another, I have a guideline that I'll be looking at, I have collected compost food right in front of me, actually, there's a list of things that I have to go through, and make sure that it's implemented in for the residents. So that's part of the guideline, we have to make a list for, okay, this is what it is, the only thing you can put in this, like T-bones or whatever, I, I don't, whatever it is, what is not supposed to be in there, that's what they need to know, that's what.
I guess I'll ask you, pursuing the question a little bit deeper, maybe for the overall committee, is, I understand what should be in there, and should not be in there, but what if something is in there, is there a liability to the town? Or does this define?
I could verify that for you.
Basically says it's not.
Once it leaves us, John, once it leave us, and I talked to John, his first name, I talked to him today, that the state of Maine has different regulations on this, and he does pickup in New Hampshire. Now, he asked me, because I asked him a bunch of questions about what about DES, what about this, what about the permits, what about this? He goes, you're actually the first transfer station to ask about a lot of this stuff. But once we do this, once he picks it up, it's in his hands. Now, I have to find out from that point, once he, once we collect it, is another area. That's what I want to find out, and then he takes it and gone.
Surely it's not 100% everybody complying.
Let me answer. You should just ask him what happens if we actually give him a bad bag.
Yeah.
Probably say, don't do it again.
Can, somebody on the committee, or maybe you can answer the question, but how do you get to $80 per ton, what does that include?
Even with a ton, MSW.
That's our $66 tipage, and an average of $14 or $15 for, for, you know, it's about, I think it's four, usually about a load of 14 divided by a cost of 200, or it's up to about $80.
So it's the tipping and hauling fee?
Tipping plus hauling.
Yes.
So in terms of costs, the question I have is, in terms of how much staffing is this going to need from the transfer station?
Well, that's, the idea is, that's one of the questions we're trying to answer.
That's what we're trying to do. That's part of.
That'll be our report, right, that'll be our report out, you know, and hopefully we could have, you know, in a few months, we could keep the board updated, how things look like they're going.
And this money would come out of your budget, Toby?
Yes.
You have it somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanted to figure it out. You got enough to get it going and move forward and make, get this pilot program going, so.
Actually, I think it's a good idea, anything that we can do to recycle or reduce tonnage in the town, so I applaud the committee for working in that direction.
Any other questions?
All right, good, I'd like to go ahead with the.
And we'll keep the board informed of what's going on.
Scott.
Yes. Yes, you do.
Question for the committee, I guess, have you thought about doing a survey prior to implementing the program, just to see what the interest would be, and what people are doing now with particularly the compostables and the food waste in particular, are they putting it down a garbage disposal, are they bringing it to the dump, are they composting it themselves? What's the status right now? Do we know? Do we have any idea?
Roger did it once, a few years ago. I'm sorry, that's all I know.
So, so I would suggest perhaps doing that, just a quick survey, maybe in the eCrier, although that, you know, my common complaint is that doesn't reach everybody, but maybe sending out a postcard, do you have, how much money do you have that you want to spend in the, maybe $900 to send out a postcard to everybody in town?
It seems that, it seems to me that actually just going ahead with this program would be probably the easiest way to figure out what people, you know, how much interest there is.
The truth.
Right, rather than, you know, to really say, are you willing to participate? I believe so, for instance, I compost, I know Dean compost, we do that in our backyards. I am unlikely to stop composting in my backyard so I can make extra trips to the dump, right? But on the other hand, meat and dairy, which I don't compost in the backyard, I will start bringing to the dump. I think we can only know from how people behave when they have the opportunity to sign up. If we find people are knocking down our doors, and we have more than 200 people who want to sign up, that would be a lot of information right there.
I'd say we definitely don't want people who are already composting at home.
Right.
Well, that's my question, I guess, is, is do we know what the status is, and is it going to change people's habits? If it's easier just to take it to the dump, or to the transfer station, excuse me?
Yeah, sorry.
But the other question is, if you've got to maintain that for a week before they pick it up, in the middle of July, I've been composting for 40 years, and I will tell you that in the middle of July, it's going to be different than in the middle of December. And if they're only picking it up once a week, there are all kinds of issues besides odor, and flies, and bears, how are you going to keep them out of that? So, but looking down the road, you know, you mentioned the town doing their own composting, the problem is with the law, the way it will be written, I'm pretty sure, is that you will have to have an enclosed facility to compost food waste in, so that's going to be a big expense. So those are things, anyway, I just want to throw them out and ask the question, but you don't know.
You're right about that, because I actually, I ran into that.
That's what we think, we don't, we don't know until we try, so we think that that's the best way to really collect the data.
I ran into that being enclosed, but doing this 90-day thing is something, at least we get something that we're going to baseline what we're doing. But there is a lot of residents, I'm sure they are composting, but also Mr. Fox allows a lot of, if you want to continue that, if you will want to take that, but it's going to be a different fee. You can do the transfer station, or you could do individuals, it's, I guess it's all up to individuals, the, kind of the residents, if they want to do their own, or if they want to bring it to us, so we don't know until we do something to figure out if it's going to take off or not. We don't know.
Any other comments for anybody? So are we in favor of pursuing this for the six months?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, just one more observation, the issuing of one bag a week, is that for people to bring and fill up? Are they limited to one bag a week?
No, no, we're going to give them a lot of bags, and we'll see how many, we just predict that as the average.
The transfer station's open three days a week.
You can dump three days a week?
You could dump three days a week, and when you, if you really sit down and look at all the compostable stuff in the household, it's a lot of material.
Yeah.
For 200 people to fill up two totes, is a lot of material.
Yes.
So how much of that compostable stuff are we getting paid for now, as far as paper or things like that, that could be compostable, that are liable to go into the bins where they're being sold now?
Well, we definitely want to encourage people not to throw away stuff that makes money.
Dean, Dean, three strikes, you're out. He wants to speak.
He always wants to speak.
Take your time, Dean, that's my last question.
Did you want to?
No, I understand, I mean, the idea, I mean, it would be great if there was a huge response, and if we would, you know, again, we don't want this to cost the town any money in the long run, so I think the thinking was at the meeting is, if this was actually going to burn through the $800 faster than six months, we would just cut it off at that point, so we are capping the expense to the town for this pilot program. I mean, I, I'm really interested in where Eric found out about what's going to happen with these regulations, because I think that's.
I've been following them for 30 years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I understand that at this previous meeting, when I was on vacation, I was asked to look into what the impact of the bond vote failing this past launch had on the expenditure of the remaining funds from the 2013 model of the project. So it's my understanding that there is approximately, it's about $37,000, the last I was doing this calendar, left of the original $115,000. So the answer that I received from NHMA is that the 2019 vote doesn't, doesn't override the 2018 vote. So the funds, the $37,000 can be spent, but it has to be spent on purpose from the original 2018 one, which was preliminary engineering and schematic design. So in other words, we could go forward and build something with the $37,000 because the 2019 one articles strictly.
But we can use it for the design and the services?
Yes, yep. And in order to spend it past March 30th of this year, the board just has a vote in public opinion to accommodate.
So we don't even have anything like a purchase order out or something?
Because it was a special warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, did you vote on, are you voting to go down on the pilot program?
We agreed to move forward.
You did vote, okay, that's what I thought.
We did vote, but it was like.
They nodded.
It's a consensus. Okay, thank you very much.
So the board may recall, I believe I discussed this during the budget process, that the platform, virtual town hall that we use for our website, the company was purchased by Civic Plus, and the technology that powers our website is old and a hub's on the heat, and they're phasing it out starting this month. So our choice was either we stay with Civic Plus and pay some money to upgrade the website to the new platform, or we'd have to try to go get some other. So through the budget process, we did have the funds approved to upgrade to the new platform. I'd like to enter into a contract now so that we can get that ball rolling again, because they're not going to be supporting the platform that we're on now past April, so we need to do the migration.
Okay, that's what I was just going to ask, because, because is what we approved or the money that's there cover the cost of moving all the data over and solving any problems relative to how it plays?
Yes, so it's $4,500 to do a full website redesign with custom design, which is what I recommend we go with. I have $1,000 in this year's budget, which they will take as a way to get started, and then we'll pay the balance with the funds from the 2020 budget starting July.
And the contract, annual contract is in the?
Yes, and it's the same.
As before?
As before, it's $2,600, it might go up 5% starting the third year.
Is there a, a big difference relative to the user, how he has to learn to, to use the program?
We hope not.
Is there training that goes with that?
Yes, yes, they, they walk us through, they train us through the whole process. I know other towns have done it, it was almost, I shouldn't say everybody, an awful lot of towns were with virtual town hall, and a number of them have already gone through this process, so.
Any questions?
No question.
I moved to grant the town manager authority into a contract with Civic Plus as presented. Sorry, a second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you. Nothing else? Other than a recommendation that the board hold off on signing the numerous consent agenda documents until after you come back from non-public? Just because it's, it's just going to take a while.
Okay, so is there any objection to me moving number eight to after number 10? On the agenda?
No objection.
All right. Number nine, I moved to enter into non-public session, New Hampshire RSA 91-843, moving number two, subsections A, C, and L, and roll call vote, do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Brown.
Mr. LaCour.
Agenda item number 10.
I'm going to seal this.
Yep, 10. I moved to seal the non-public minutes, do I have a second?
Third.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. LaCour?
Aye.
Mr. Bugby?
Aye.
Okay, back to number eight, I moved to accept the consent, this consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, get your pens out.
Let's just, shall we? There's a lot to sign. Do you want, do you want to start, I'm sorry, on your end, and Rebecca can.
I think you should start them all down here, because we know who the slow signer is.
Can't be me, I'm in the middle.
Oh, I didn't mention any names. There was no names.
I'm sorry, did you just say I'm a slow signer?
I didn't say anything about your name.
Would it get really confusing if I gave John a stack?
What's really gonna happen?
It's gonna come like this.
I know. It's gonna be John's...
You haven't seen slow.
C. C.
Oh, gosh.
And he's gonna enunciate every vowel, consonant.
I do.
And you are so... So many heels, it's supposed to be easy. There's gonna be a better place to announce.
Yeah, this is gonna get you...
Three.
No, this one doesn't make sense. It's a...
No place to sign. Pass it on. No sign.
The one was, he always used to do it regardless. He, he has no mortgage. And now these, I mean, and these taxes aren't high enough to, it's just gonna be a standard deduction. Well, would you... I don't, I never printed, so I can't picture what it said at the top of the form. I need to go online and look at it. But it's pretty cool. Did you, did it, did you go in and then they each tried to replace? Did you put it? I went in and I just answered all the questions. I, and did you use it? No, I used turtle ducts. Okay. So is there a good place in this one? I have some pretty nice places in Argentina. I hate doing that. The clock is running. Argentina's is closer to...
You can still, you're on TV.
Maybe they'll give you a singing career.
Is anybody ready for a new stack?
Everybody ready here.
Are you ready for a new stack?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep, he said yes. He said yes, and Scott said something.
Well, yes.
Wow.
Can you do initials? Can you just do initials without having to sign?
That's what many peoples that are signatures, like mine has. Yes, it's, it's pretty...
It's just changing?
Pretty much.
Hey, what's up with taking the first slot here, Mr. Brown?
What, what's the matter? What is the problem?
Oh, you're taking my slot.
Then you moved, you're at the bottom.
Yeah, you're at the bottom.
I tried to get you to sit here, so you would be number one, and you have the number nine slot. And you still know you wanted to sit there?
It doesn't mean anything. Generally speaking, when you're signing something, you start at the top and work your way down. Oh, my God. No, is it that? Now I gotta, now I gotta remember what we did.
I mean, I heard you hearing, I didn't, I didn't...
That does it. Only initial.
Big C, C's on there. B, B.
B pro. Initials and initials.
So somebody actually count, how many things have we actually signed?
There's nothing on here.
Nope, there's nothing on that. Just throw it in the...
Anything else?
Yes, there is.
I did not give you that. These are all over. Such a ridiculous. This is Mr. Brown's.
Yeah, Mr. Brown's?
It's Mr. Brown's.
What's the matter? What's the matter? You don't like my little sign over there?
There's nothing in that one.
Hmm? Are these all done? I know all this stuff. Oh, this one needs a lot. Where did these come from?
Yeah, we don't need that. We don't need that. Oh, here we go, signing my place again.
This goes with... Oh, did that get scooped? Doesn't it?
What's going on? You just got scooped, Liv.
I'm just gonna monitor. School teacher.
Do you have your ruler out?
Don't give it to that.
This is, this is still confusing. Good? Yes.
You're always waiting for it.
I know, it's not me.
It's making me cry. Now, look, why don't I get that one back? It's done, it's signed. It's got CB right on it right there.
What? You missed that?
How come these aren't signed by you?
Because we haven't yet.
They haven't come my way. Look, look, look. There's no, there's no Bugby on that one.
We never got him here yet.
There's no LaCrosse.
Hasn't come this way yet.
Yes, it has. It's come that way two or three times. Keep sending it back to me.
You see?
How come I get this and you don't get it?
I get those, but I pick one out.
You could. You have one left.
Well, I have a delivery system that's called Denise. I may be a little spoiled, I guess. Oh, I see.
Perfect.
Look at that, ran out of ink.
Just about.
Well, so number eight, you're all good?
Yep.
All right. Number eleven, miscellaneous unfinished business. I have two things. One, um, I saw this in the paper, and I know when we take MasterCard and Visa, there is a suit that we can join and get some money.
Okay.
I don't know if we qualify, but we take Master, it says for merchants who accept Visa and MasterCard at any time between January first, two thousand and four, and January twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, it notices a class estimate of approximately five point five four to six point two four billion dollars. So can I give this to you and you and the town clerk and see if we can?
Yep.
I think there's a form you have to fill out. But I'm not sure.
Usually they send you a, uh, a notification of some kind if you're, if you can, if you're eligible, if you would, to receive something.
Well, it would be nice, even if it's a couple thousand dollars, I don't know, but if we can... Oh, I do it, I get money back.
You do?
Yeah, but not this particular one. I don't, I'm not a merchant, but I would think we'd be able to, I don't know. So just take a look, you see. The other thing I have, I have a request from the TCVC. Uh, one of the things we're looking, things we're looking for is the board's direction on the use of this building for the next fifteen to twenty years. Um, so if we can be thinking about what we think this particular structure is gonna be used for in that particular amount of time, we're looking to see, right now we use the top floor for meeting rooms. Does the board think in fifteen, twenty years, this will be bookrooms for, you know, fire department people, EMSs or whatever? We're trying to get an idea to a meeting space and if we have to plan for the future in terms of meeting someplace else. That's just one of the things we're looking at.
Okay.
So they asked me to ask this group if we could be thinking about that.
Okay.
So maybe at the next meeting, we can have a discussion about that, because I'm the ruling.
When do you wanna discuss it?
Maybe at the next meeting?
Okay.
Give us a couple weeks to think about it and see what we think.
Okay. Good.
Those are the two things I have.
Um, question. Has the TCVC had an opportunity to look at the documents that LBA provided?
We'll discuss that on Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah. I noticed that the, you cut the check, but said to hold it, so. Yeah, there was a couple of things. In terms of discussion, you had the executive summary, and there was something else that you said there that they won't be giving us.
Right. Well, the contract called it a report with an executive summary. This was a series, just a set of email documents.
Okay. Well, um, we received the information, so we'll take a look at what we got and if that satisfies us enough.
Okay.
Other than the nine hundred dollar credit, there's like three hundred dollars left if we process that check, so. But we'll discuss that on Wednesday?
Okay.
Yeah, one o'clock.
I have a couple of things that we were talking goals and what we want to do there next year. One was already covered, which I had written down, which is attendance coverage, came up just naturally at that point. I think last time we discussed that obviously we want to continue, look, update the facilities, and TB, TBVC is doing that. At least moving in that general direction. I'd like to do a survey or something, but I just want to put on the table about recreation within a town. Are we meeting their recreation needs of the town? Because we had this discussion with USR, the Youth Association, we had the Recreation Commission with their thoughts, and this, this has been entangled now for two or three years. I'd like to get some formal data instead of just opinion. See if we can maybe put a survey together to say, you know, is the town meeting your recreational needs for your family? If so, tell us. If not, what do we need? And I think that'll help us a little bit.
Shouldn't the Rec Commission be involved in?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But somehow I want to have the board consider moving that forward. So maybe the Rec Commission will do that with our permission and our support. That'll help us to decide, because we know that, um, certain people in town want to not have the USR Youth Association kind of running the show, and maybe that's right, I'm not sure. But let's see what you...
Well, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, because there is a question that, that you hear every now and then about whether it meets the needs or is servicing, if you would, the senior citizen group, as well as the children. Right now it's more directed at, uh, children, et cetera, so I, I think it's a good thing to...
Well, addressing the whole spectrum.
The whole spectrum.
We do a good job in terms of the kids. We have all kinds of different things. You have the Easter egg hunt, you have the fishing derby, you have the model rocket day, uh, you have, um...
They're trying to move into like the drones and so on and so forth.
So you can see the music satisfying that whole range, but, well, some of the stuff we used to do is organize trips for people. You know, like going to a Red Sox game or going to something like that, but, um, yeah, we don't do very much for those...
That's correct.
Non-teenager and below type people.
So maybe we could, um, you know, just move in that direction, we could talk to Larry about it and get something out there. And, uh, and the survey, I don't know, if we can do it through the, you know, the crya, but like, everybody says, not everybody gets it, so I think it's a, I'll share it this way.
Yeah, I don't know, in terms of sending it out, either, I don't know, we're gonna get some response, but...
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And there's a cost associated with that, but...
Absolutely.
Um, in terms of goals, the, the big thing for me is getting the whole town center thing. That's my focus.
I think that's the primary.
So...
It's a, it's a primary issue. We need to do something about, you know, the town hall, the, the business side.
The other thing, one of the things that Town Center Vision has talked about is in terms of, I, I believe I understand why we did the lumping altogether. I think one of the things that we've had discussions about is, you know, for us to consider, us, this group, consider splitting them up and giving it an à la carte.
Yep.
And give people a particular options. Um, I know some people don't like that, but I think one of the things we could do is if you call the different options, and let's say two of them pass, or whatever happens to be, we could calculate, the TCVC could calculate what the statements would be on those particular two combining. Um, so, uh, I think for me, that's the focus there for this year, is to get that in front of the voters again, whatever those particular option or options have to be, and see if we can, we can headway.
Well, I would like, at the very least, to get the town hall, one, inspected again, to see if, uh, if it's degrading to the extent that, uh, that maybe we need to put more priority on putting some construction underway at the town hall, because we know it's not getting any better. And I think it would be a good idea to get it looked at.
Uh, one of the, one of the things we're looking at, there's a, I don't remember how many options, there's probably twelve different things we're kind of looking at. One of them is that, what would it take to physically move those people out to someplace else? Looking at what those options are. Uh, one of the things we talked about is the newest parking, uh, plaza. Renting out one of those temporarily, moving all the people, and renovating the structure. Doing modulators, moving them up into this facility here. I don't know, we talked about that. It's not necessarily something that's advantageous, but, you know, looking at all those things. So when this group gets together and looks at those, they'll at least have that information, so they can decide, is that something you want to pursue? Is not, but at least you'll have that information to make an educated decision in terms of what to move forward with.